Take attendance.
Again, Dave Pimble.
Present.
Stephanie Mullen, present. Just going across my screen here, Scott Gergen.
Here.
Ryan Davis.
Here.
Lisa Hadine.
Here.
Kelsey Waits.
Here.
And tracking that Becky Bysel will be in shortly, correct?
Yep. That is the hope. All right, so first up on our agenda tonight is a motion to approve the agenda. So, okay.
Second.
All right. And then is there any discussion? Right, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose, same sign. Motion carries. All right, approval of the minutes from the February 24th regular board meeting. Do we have a motion to approve?
Some of.
Second.
Okay, any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
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 Aye. Oppose, same sign. Motion carries. All right, so I would like to recognize a couple of visitors that we have on our call tonight, Doug Schmidt and Cheryl Borgan. And then for anyone watching at home, thank you for watching and for joining tonight. And as always, you can go on to our website and sign into Board Book if you want to follow along with the agenda. So we will hear more from our visitors possibly right now with our announcements and recognitions.
That's right, we have, as you mentioned, Cheryl Borgan, one of our choir directors here. And she has a guest with her who she will introduce and announce a pretty big award for us over this past year. So Cheryl, I will turn it over to you to make the announcement.
Okay, thank you. So first, on behalf of all of our music staff K through 12, and not only do we have an extraordinary group of people to work with, but we're extremely grateful to be in a district that supports music the way it does. And so that has led us and you to kind of a rather big award we received for our last school year. So I'm going to hand it off to Doug to kind of tell you more about that.
Well, thank you. So I am one of the fourth generation owners of Schmidt Music, and I'm here today to help you celebrate the fine work that keeps happening in your music department for the third year in a row. I'd like to thank middle school choir director Cheryl Borgan, superintendent Dr. Robert McDowell, along with all our friends from the Hastings Public Schools, from all your friends at Schmidt Music, including my brother Tom and me, two of our sons Pete and Ted, Sarah Nicholson, our Woodbury store manager, and the guy you're most likely to see around your schools every week, our school service representative. 124th anniversary on November 16. We are in the music products industry, which includes instrument companies, publishers, retailers, and everyone else involved in helping you to be able to teach your students the fine art of music. Our music products industry has a trade association called the National Association of Music Merchants, or just NAM, which was established in 1901, just five years after our company was started. NAM is the association that strengthens the $17 billion global music products industry. In 1998, NAM established their Best Communities for Music Education Award. In 2020, its 22nd year, this program celebrates and recognizes innovative and resourceful music education programs in the United States and those schools and communities that support them. In order to apply for this award, Cheryl Borgan completed a 54-page survey that covers pretty much every... Hold on a second. Little screen screwed up. She completed a 54-page survey that covers pretty much every aspect of a music education program. This survey was developed in partnership with the Music Research Institute at the University of Kansas. Survey questions are aligned with goals for equity and access to music education for all students and with national standards for music education. In 2020, just 754 school districts earned this award out of more than 14,000 school districts in the United States. Of these 754 winners, 20 are serviced by Schmidt Music. This puts Hastings in the top 5% of music programs in the nation. Bravo. Cheryl Borgan, Jordan SwanTech, and I worked together to get your awards printed, framed, and delivered to everyone we could think of who was instrumental in making your music department so excellent. If for any reason we may have missed someone or made a spelling mistake, please alert Cheryl, and she can contact me so I can make those corrections and get new awards to you ASAP. Before I go, NAM loves to get pictures of people who win their awards. So if you're on camera and have your award handy, please raise it up and shout hip, hip, hooray for the Hastings Music Department. I'll count on one of you to grab a screenshot or some other means of getting some pictures. Cheers, keep up your great work, and thanks for your ongoing support of Schmidt Music.
Thank you.
So that was, that was my canned presentation. If you have any questions, I'm happy to take them, but just wanted to get all those little bits in.
I, I just want to reiterate that, that 54-page questionnaire, it was contributed to by all of the staff members. Obviously, we had to talk about curriculum and all sorts of things, K-12. And so everybody chipped in. And again, I just want to say how lucky we are to have such quality educators in our program, all the way from kindergarten through senior year.
Awesome. So yeah, if, if you guys did, were you able to get those awards out to everyone? Great. And if, if there's some way to grab a screenshot or something, that would be really fun.
I'll send you one.
Okay, this is, this is the topic we call music advocacy. And this is the best part of it, when you get to celebrate with a school board and, and just say thank you for your support in keeping it going. And especially during a pandemic year, we're, we're so pleased to have, have that to be able to celebrate. So that's all I've got.
All right, well, thank you very much. And that is a very exciting award to receive. And we do have a wonderful music program. So thank you, Cheryl, and to everyone else who is part of the program for making it what it is.
Thanks.
I'm going to sign off now, and I'll assume you'll do great work tonight. Thank you, and good night.
All right, thank you.
Yep.
Thanks, Cheryl. Congratulations.
All right, do we have any other announcements or recognitions tonight?
That's it tonight.
Okay, then we will move along for items for discussion, beginning with a couple of policies that we're going to have the first reading on. The first of which is Policy 428, ethical behavior for employees and personnel. So do we have any discussion on this policy? So this was reviewed by Kevin Rupp, and there were a few minor changes made. But the policy committee does recommend that this be brought forward for the first reading, obviously, which is why it's here. So if you do have any questions or comments, just let us know. All right, seeing none. Let's make one last pass. The next policy up for first reading is Policy 429, Conflict of Interest. And there is no MSBA model policy for this. And so Kevin Rupp reviewed Hastings' current conflict of interest policy. And there were some language adjustments, and we're bringing it forward for the first reading here. So are there any questions or comments on this one? Okay. Then we will move right along. So the first one up is, for the second reading, the only one, is Policy 421, Gifts to Employees and School Board Members. Are there any questions or comments on this one? If not, then we can take a motion to move this to an action item.
I'll move. Second.
Okay, is there any discussion? All right, all those in favor of moving Policy 421 to an action item, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose, same sign. Motion carries, so we will see this one again later. Last for our discussion items is the school calendars. And so this is both the 2021, 22, and 22, 23 school year calendars.
Yes, so what we have for us tonight, we have a discussion item. And then you will see on the consent agenda, there's also a calendar piece for the consent agenda as well. But I want to start off with just thanking the calendar committee that puts in time to put together our calendars, and this year especially because we worked to review and retool the 21, 22 calendar so that we could build in some time for Rosh Hashanah in the fall. And I want to just thank Paul Baker, Lori Best, Emily Heiner, Jesse Holm, Angie Jorgensen, Janelle Knudsen, Katie Mastick, Rochelle Nielsen, Jen Reichel, Bernie Vargas, Mike Johnson, and Kathy Mullen. As you can tell, it takes a large group to rework and work the calendars. And there are some changes for both calendars, but we believe we have two calendars that look really good. And the committee came to agreement on. And so I'm going to turn it over to Kathy Mullen, who has been working with the group to get the final drafts in place to talk about what those changes are.
Good evening. There is not, you'll see, we did some shifting and some moving of some dates on the calendar as far as it relates to workshop and PD days. To give you kind of the main highlights of the changes of the 21, 22 calendar, as Bob mentioned, we did make a change at the start of the school year and shifted the first day of school back one day in order to accommodate the Rosh Hashanah holiday for our families and our staff on that day. So school start was shifted from the 7th to the 8th of September. As you go through the calendar, you'll see that the early release days have been removed from the calendar. We did change the student contact days from 172 to 171 and incorporated a PD day in there. So you'll see that there's a PD day in that first week of workshop week. And there's also a PD day that's been added that, at the end of that month of September. As I said, we made shifts. You'll see that the workshop days and the PD days have kind of shifted around. And then the other thing that you'll see changed is in September, you'll see a note underneath of the calendar that shows you that there's a staggered start to the school year. So the first day of school on 9/8 will be the first day of school for grades 1 through 5 and 9. And then the second day of school, which is September 9th, will be the first day of school for kindergarten, grade 6 and 8, and then grades 10 through 12. So that's the 21, 22 calendar. We pretty much duplicated that calendar for 22, 23, with the exception of Rosh Hashanah falls at a different time in the second year. And so that we moved the first day of school back to that Tuesday after Labor Day. Otherwise, the calendar is very similar to the 21, 22.
Scott?
Just first of all, thank you so much for getting rid of the early release days. I really appreciate that. I know a number of parents that have contacted me that really appreciate that. So thank you. Second, was there any consideration given? I noticed that Martin Luther King Jr. in January is a teacher workshop day while we don't have students in school. And I've received, in previous years, I've received feedback when, when we've had that from teaching staff kind of questioning our decision around why are we doing a teacher workshop day on Martin Luther King Jr. day in January? And I noticed that it's on both of the calendars. It's set up that way. So can you talk about that a little bit? Was there any consideration given to that? Was it even a topic?
Yeah, it was a topic. We did have some conversation. It is a PD day so that it gives people a little bit more flexibility, and they're able to be out that day so that they're out earlier in the day. But in the grand scheme of the overall calendars, the decision was made to leave it as a PD day. Otherwise, you shift your whole school year back one more day.
Right.
Then wraps to another week. And so
Yep.
the committee kind of weighed all the pieces and decided to leave it where it was.
Yeah, I understand that there's always a balancing act that has to happen because we don't want to be getting out of school the middle of June either.
Yes.
So I can, I can certainly appreciate that. I, I understand the consideration and the decision. Thank you for doing that. I appreciate it.
Yes, thank you.
So Kathy, I have a question on that too. So despite the fact that it's a national day of service across the country, there was still no other way to avoid doing that, but to just say the heck with it, we're going to do it anyway. There was no other way to shift days. There was no...
There's always a way, but after looking at the overall calendar and all of the days, the decision was still made to leave it where it was. And you know, I apologize, I didn't focus on getting the specific details, and I wasn't at the last meeting. So I can get more information for you if you'd like on that day.
I would be, because there are a number, I mean, teachers aside. And yeah, they get out earlier, but there are, you know, we are not, in my opinion, following what other districts are trying to do, which is acknowledge that day, give faculty, staff, administrators, communities, an opportunity to get out all day long and do things within their communities or other communities that are related to what this Making a National Day of Service is all about. I think we're getting behind it, and that's two more years from now.
So I can share with you the conversations that we had when we talked about this through the first meeting. If you look at that 21, 22 calendar, by adding another day that's a non-student, non-staff day, you push that Friday, the 10th, which is now the last day and workshop day, to a Monday of the following week. And so when those factors were weighed, it was decided that they would rather keep that as a staff development day than, rather than push into another week when you get into June.
I think maybe I could add in there too, this, Brian and Scott, to bring that up. This would be a great conversation, I think, particularly even for the, for the 22, 23 calendar. When we look at other days, when you ask the question, there's no other way around it. I think there are ways around it. I think we have to look at all of the days that we take off in the calendar. For example, the fact that we in April have both the 15th and the 18th as days that we designate as days off. We maybe want to look at things like that. I think, Brian, to your point, from a calendar perspective, we, we might be to the spot where I think the school board, it would behoove you to weigh in and have some good conversation about what are the days that we are going to designate as holidays that aren't federal holidays for our staff in contracts and calendars. That, that would be a conversation I'd recommend you have as a school board. And now might be the time, not tonight now, but now might be the time to really dig into it and, and set something. Because we can always change that 22, 23 calendar, even if we need to move forward 21, 22.
And that calendar is also, oh, I apologize. Go ahead.
Oh, I was just going to say that I think, I know this question was raised last year. And, and right now, the days that we are off, the holidays that we are off, are embedded in the contract language. And, and so it's that matter of like finding the breakpoint. And I appreciate Bob's statement about that, which is if we were to weigh in and say, you know, through the process of contract negotiations, because right now, many of these days are blocked in existing signed contracts, that, that that's language we bring to the negotiations table. But that's got to come at the school board level. It's not going to come at the calendar committee. Calendar committee is going to say, well, here's our constraints, and then work with it. And that's how you end up in that week of the 13th. So it does feel like we're, we're near a point where we can engage that, that break the language of the, or at least challenge the language in our existing contracts.
And then Stephanie, I saw you had unmuted for a second there. Did you have something?
It was already talked about, looking at different days, but in negotiating the contract, that's, that's all it was.
Yep.
So that spring holiday is, is embedded in there, in the contract? I don't even remember seeing spring holiday last couple of years.
Right now, I did, I saw something. I, I mean, it's a huge contract, so.
Well, yeah.
Brian, some of the other days are embedded in there. So like Presidents' Day is listed.
No, I, I get that at least. Spring holiday wasn't even a thing a couple of years ago, so it couldn't be embedded in the contract, just as an example.
Well, right. And that's the challenge.
Let's, we have Kathy on. Let's let Kathy.
So to, to, let me answer that question first, Brian. So yes, the day before the Easter holiday, the Friday before and the Monday after are both in the contracts. It may not be every contract, but many of the contracts have those actually defined as days in the, as holidays in their contracts. So that is absolutely something that we could look at as we go through this next round of negotiations to make some revisions, to move that or do something different with it. I was just going to also follow up, Brian, to your comment earlier about the possibility of that day being moved to a non-work day. If you look at the 22, 23 calendar, we actually have a calendar lands on a Thursday end date. So it would be a year where it would be easier, even if we did change things, to shift that day so that you'd, you'd end up having your day one day later, but you'd have a non-school, non-work day in there. So you could make that Martin Luther King the day of service. So that is a place where we could make a revision when we finalize that 22, 23. Because remember, this is just an initial draft coming to you to kind of set the timelines, but it'll come back again for a final.
All right. Any other questions or comments? Brian?
Yeah, what?
Oh, I was just seeing if you had anything else or to follow up with Kathy.
No, I mean, I, I could belabor this all night, so no, not really. I, I just, I, I'm, I'm just, I'm just thinking about the fact that we've got so many different things. I, I agree with Bob. I think it's something we're going to have to try to look at in the contractual language and see if we can work through it that way. And it's probably going to be the way out of this, is something along those lines, because so many things are embedded in there, and I think it's got us slightly handcuffed. I mean, I look at spring break, and I kind of laugh, because honestly, let's be honest, spring break's been going on for three weeks at least already. And the school technically hasn't had spring break yet. Um, so I mean, some of this stuff, I mean, it is what it is for now. We'll just have to see what we can do for 22, 23.
Okay.
All right, I believe this is part of your consent agenda for approval while you're in the meeting.
It is. Yep. So thank you for answering our questions and kind of giving us that, that background.
We're not approving that tonight, are we? Just 21, 22?
Well, they are, we're approving the draft of the calendar.
Can we separate those out? I can support 21, 22. I only support the draft of 22, 23 right now.
So Superintendent McDowell, can we move that out, or do you need a rough draft approved?
That is up to you as a board. Districts do it differently. Some districts continue to approve multiple years of calendars. Other districts have gone to approving one at a time. I'm just following past practice. If you want to entertain that, then I would recommend that when we get to the consent agenda, someone pull the calendar item from the consent agenda as its individual item, and then you would make an amendment to that as an individual action item.
Okay. Then we will move into administrative reports.
All right, I'm going to make this quick tonight. Really just going to update about strategic planning, and since we have an audience tonight, letting people know that we've announced this over our radar update, but we have begun the strategic planning process. And soon we will begin to update our website with the happenings as they go on, as well as the timeline of events. I'm happy to announce that our survey that went out to parents and students and staff has already collected 1,063 responses. We're in the process of setting up focus groups right now, which will take place the, during the couple, two, three weeks after we get back from spring break. And so we are moving right along with strategic planning. In addition to that, just a reminder that we are planning to move all of our students to in-person full-time on April 6th, on the day we come back from spring break. And a reminder that while we're doing that, quarantining is still in play. And just be, parents, just be aware that when we move to in-person, that reduces our social distancing from six feet to really zero to three feet at elementary, but to three feet at secondary. And so when we have a positive case, you can see how exponentially more kids are going to quarantine than what has happened in the past. And, and that's, that's just kind of what happens with that. But it'll be good to have everybody back in, in place. A quick announcement, just that we are, it's been announced at the high school, but right now we are planning for prom and the grand march for prom to take place May 8th. We're not quite sure exactly what that looks like yet. We got more guidance from the Department of Health today that added some more restrictions on what we can and can't do. But at least a version of that is the plan. And graduation is set for June 4th. And we are in the process of getting everything ready so we can have it at Todd Field, whether that's one event or multiple events or whatever. And we'll have a rain date coming, but we don't have that set yet. But we are, we are in the process of ordering all of the things that we need to make that happen for families of our seniors this year. So we just don't know specifically what that'll look like. And then my last announcement is simply that in the midst of, of all this pandemic, we are still doing MCA testing. And our 10th and 11th graders today did their MCA testing. The rest of our students will be engaging in MCA testing when we come back from spring break. And that concludes my update.
Great, thank you. Does anyone have any questions for Superintendent McDowell? All right, then we will move right along to the Building Construction Fund project update.
So there are a few updates to the Building Construction Fund. We had the McCullough Deferred Maintenance Project that moves into in-process. There's a couple other in-process projects that we anticipate for next month will move into completed, hopefully. So we've got the district-wide camera project and the high school bass replacement. Those two projects should really be moving. We've worked with Wold on that. And then the other addition is in the new projects coming out of contingency. Last board meeting, the high school tennis court replacement and the middle school track replacement were approved. So they're on there right now with to-be-determined dollar amounts, but at least noted so that we can track them. And that's all I have on the Building Construction Fund.
Great, thank you. Does anyone have any questions? Lisa?
Um. My question, Jen, is with regards to middle school, school storage building. I, I had expected to see that on transfers from contingency, and I'm sorry, it didn't, it didn't process in my brain until you said those other ones out loud. I know I've had this for days to review. I'm sorry.
Sure. Nope, that's fine. So I'll be adding that next month. We're kind of looking at them in two different phases. Those first two projects were hopefully looking to start relatively soon and complete over the summer. And then that storage shed or building will be more in the fall. So I, as I, I, Bob, I signed the fee letter with Wold for the two projects that I added. So that's kind of my process for when I add them.
All right, thank you. Thanks for that clarification.
Sure.
Good question. Thank you, Lisa. Any other questions? All right, then let's take a look at student enrollment.
So just a quick update on this one, the student enrollment numbers were, they stayed the same. There was no change from February. So at this point, that's good news.
Okie dokie. Any questions or discussion on that? All right, then we will go into policy committee, which we already saw a couple of the policies brought up. But we had two meetings this month, one on the 2nd and one on the 16th. So we discussed the equity policy after our board... So we discussed the equity policy after our board meeting last month and we reviewed it to take additional feedback. And so in order to have further discussion, the equity policy will be brought up at the board retreat next month. We also discussed and got an update on the discipline policy. And so the working group has met twice now and they've made a guiding change document. They're currently reviewing discipline policies from other districts. And they met again, hopefully two days ago in order to provide feedback. So we'll get an update on that at our next policy committee meeting. And then the goal is to have this policy in place for the 2122 school year. We also took a look again at policy 430, staff recognition. We looked at this at both meetings. So Kathy gathered information from staff and not all suggestions that they made are legally, we can't do them legally. And so Kathy has kind of gone through to see which options are actually available to us to recognize staff. And now those are going to be taken to admin to get suggestions from them and then brought back to the policy committee and we'll continue to discuss. So we also looked at policy 428 ethical behavior, which we just did the first reading tonight and policy 429 conflict of interest. Again, we did the first reading of those tonight. And from now until whenever, a policy committee is only going to be meeting once a month. We feel like we've really gotten a handle on catching up and then if needed, we'll start meeting more frequently. So you should have less policy committee updates on everything. But do you have any questions for policy? Lisa?
Thank you, Kelsey. Yeah, I understood you guys were going to take up the age to enter kindergarten. Is that, is that still on your list? That feels like something if we're going to change should be clarified prior to 2122 or it'll just be for the following year? Just curious of the timeline on that one.
Yeah, we did not. No, we were going to bring it up and now we had postponed it because we were going to need a lot more feedback on it. And so it will get brought back up then. We just didn't discuss it this month.
Is the, is your general goal on that? Or we could talk about this later too. But I guess my question, it doesn't have to be answered tonight, is is the general goal to have any modifications to that done prior to the next school year? Or are we like?
We did not set a general.
At 2223, maybe. Either of which is fine by me.
Yeah, we hadn't really set a general goal as a committee, but I do see Superintendent McDowell as unmuted, so.
No, I was just going to say the same thing and and in talking with our elementary principals, the the impact really is, or has been, if at all, one, maybe one family a year that's requested something. So it isn't, it isn't a, doesn't seem to be a large volume that we would be entertaining by getting it in place. So we've just been working through it and trying to get it. The policy is more complicated than just just reviewing it and putting it in place. So.
Just writing a date down on the sheet of paper and calling it good. Yeah, okay. Well, thanks. I really appreciate you explaining the the scale. That that helps put all of my questions to rest or reservations to rest. Thank you.
Okay. Are there any other questions for policy? All right. And we will move on to self-funded insurance.
Our last insurance committee meeting was a relatively short meeting. We spent some time, we've reviewed the claims data and looked at our reserve balances again, which are both in good standing. We also did review the final pieces of our renewal bids for the insurances for life and LTD insurance. Our life insurance rates, which you will see this information on your consent agenda for approval of the rates. Our life insurance rent went up by a half, excuse me, a half a percent or a half a cent. And our LTD rates went up by three and a half percent or I apologize, three and a half cents. So those approvals are on your agenda for approval and that will conclude all of our renewals for this planned year. Our next meeting, we will be, we're rolling into open enrollment now, starting in April. So our next meeting will be talking through how open enrollment and and that process is going. So I'd be happy to answer any questions you have.
All right. Does anyone have any questions? Thank you for the update, Kathy.
Thank you.
Seeing Scott shaking his head, he was the one I thought would have the questions, but looks like Scott's good tonight.
Nope, I I read, I still get the materials, so I I pre-read everything. If I have questions, I reach out. Don't I, Kathy?
You definitely do.
Okay. All right. Well, with that, we will move into the action items. And so first is the consent agenda. So if we want to pull out the calendar, this would be when we would need to do so.
I would move that we pull the 2223 calendar item out of the consent agenda for its own individual action item. If we would prefer not to take action on it this evening, then I would recommend that we move it to the table and table it for future meeting.
I'd second that.
So to be clear, Scott, your motion is to move the 2223 school year calendar to its own action item, not both calendar items.
Well, not both calendars, just the 2223 calendar item in its draft form. I would recommend that we, if we move it to an action item, then we're either going to have to vote yay or nay, right? If we move it to the, if we move it to a table item, we will not take a vote on it tonight. And that gives us a chance to not vote on it tonight, to take it away and and see if we would like to make a change and then bring it back. So personally, I think moving it to a table item would be the way to go. So that is my motion to move it to to pull that out of the consent agenda and table it.
Okay. Dave, to clarify, do you second tabling the 2223? Oh, wait, Superintendent McDowell.
I don't think you can do both at the same time, just a matter of procedure. I think you pull it and put it on that action item and then I think.
And from there we'll table it. Okay.
You're wrong, but I think you got to do it that way.
Okay. So the.
That works.
So the motion on the floor is an individual to move it to an individual action item.
Correct.
And Dave has seconded that. Correct, Dave? Just confirming with our discussion. Okay, sounds good. So with that, so first we have to approve moving it to an individual item. So is there any discussion on that?
The only discussion I have is that the idea behind that is that we are not going to take, when we get to that item, I will be making a motion that we table it at this time. I do not want to take a vote on the 2223. I'd like to take it away and discuss specifically Martin Luther King Jr. holiday in January of 23.
Okay.
That is, that is my intent.
Okay. Thank you. All right, Lisa?
Yeah, and I would just like to say, I definitely appreciate that intent and I think it's the right thing to do because this is not the day to work it through. I would also add though, that I do think it's important to our families in the community that we keep calendars out there a couple of years, acknowledging the fact that they changed. Now, they changed ridiculously large amounts this year, but we've changed them in the past in the course of the year. So with that being the case, I'd like us, even if we, with the intent to table, I would hope that we would take it up shortly thereafter to put a calendar out in front of our community.
Yep. I agree. And I I would even support putting it out on the, if it's not already out on the website, in draft format with whatever draft watermark or draft language we need to put into the, into the document. So it's very, very clear that this is not an approved calendar at this point. But yes, I I agree 100% Lisa, that this is something we should address at probably our next work session.
Okay. So all those in favor of moving this to an individual action item, say aye.
Aye.
I oppose, same sign. All right, motion carries. So we will see this one again shortly. So now with that removed from the consent agenda, do we have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Some second.
Right. Is there any discussion? All right. For those of you who are watching from home, if you would like to view what's in the consent agenda, that can all be found on Board Book. All right. All those in favor of approving the consent agenda, say aye.
Aye.
I oppose, same sign. All right, motion carries. So let me reload my meeting with that change. And now we're moving into individual action items. And so we have, that didn't load for some reason. We have the construction bid award recommendation.
I move.
Wait a second. Oh, yeah. Okay, we're good. Sorry. All right. Is there any discussion? All right. All those in favor of approving the construction bid award recommendation, say aye.
Aye.
I oppose, same sign. Oh, now my meeting reloaded. Okay. So we should also have policy 421. That one's not showing up, but we're going to go back up there to approve policy 421, the gifts to employees and school board members.
So move.
Second.
Right. Is there any discussion? All right. All those in favor of approving policy 421, say aye.
Aye.
Same saying. All right, motion carries. So now we have the school calendars. Tim's board book drives me nuts. Okay, school calendar. So at this point, Scott, would you like to make your motion?
I would like to move the approval of the 2022, 2023 school calendar to our table file.
Second that motion.
Is there any discussion on this?
Again, this, the intent here is to have a discussion around MLK Day in January 2023 and see if we would like to, as a board, make an adjustment to the calendar and also, you know, have a summary of what impact, if any, that has with our contracts that we have in place or our contracts that we will be negotiating.
And to me, this does feel like a good topic to tie into our equity discussion next month as well as we talk about which holidays, you know, we're giving off and which ones we aren't. But Superintendent McDowell, I saw your hand up.
Just two things, not that we shouldn't have it at the work session as a conversation, but with the way that that 2223 calendar works, if the one topic is just not have, to shift it so that Martin Luther King Day is not a professional development day, as Kathy pointed out, it would work to just make that shift for purposes of that calendar. And again, not bringing that up to say this conversation shouldn't happen because it should at a, with the board. But you could do both, I guess, is what I'm saying, if you so desired. Doesn't matter either way because there's plenty of.
He's saying that because the professional development day would just be moved, it's, it means the contract.
That's correct. And the 2223 cap, 2223 calendar, because the the end of the school year ends a day earlier, based on the way that it looks, we could shift the issue that we have for next year doesn't exist because of the day with day shift. So you could approve the 2223 calendar and have the conversation or you could wait and do it all at once and then bring it back like Scott. I just wanted to make sure you knew.
Right.
Either way, it won't, it doesn't matter.
So we could have a shift for 2223, but then we can have the larger conversation about years after that. You know, what would we like to look at?
Or you can table it and do it all at once and then we'll bring it back.
I think tabling it for now is fine, so we're not hasty. That's all. I think Scott's right on.
Is there any more discussion? All right. So all those in favor of tabling the 2223 school calendar, say aye.
Aye.
I oppose, same sign. All right, motion carries. So last up for our open meeting is just looking at what our future meeting dates are. So policy committee is actually not meeting on April 6th anymore. We'll be meeting on April 20th after our board retreat so that we can have a discussion about the equity policy that we discussed at the board retreat. Facility committee also has a meeting in April. And then just a reminder that work session on April 14th is the board retreat, so we are shifting that an hour earlier. And then regular board meeting on April 28th. All right. And then with that, do we have a motion to move to a, to adjourn to a closed meeting?
I move that we adjourn to a closed meeting at this time.
Second.
And to be clear, this is for purposes of discussing negotiation strategies for the teacher contract. So. All right. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye. Aye.
Aye. All right. We are adjourned to a closed meeting.
All right. So we'll wait for everybody to get kind of reset and we'll have, we'll excuse people who are on here.